October ninth, two thousand eighteen, city council meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Webb.
Here.
Mayor President Aubrey.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Laquiro.
Here.
Councilmember Holland.
Here.
Imocation and Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
Holy Spirit, source of all life, we gather together as the elected officials of our community, charged by the people to discern our future together. We are a diverse body brought together by the same spirit. We pray that we will be faithful to the hand, to the work at hand, to set aside our own personal agendas, to make, to seek out the greater good. Open our minds and our hearts to listen in for your will for us and bestow upon us your wisdom and grace. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, I need an approval of the revised agenda.
Move approval of the revised agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Support.
Any dissension? Discussion? We have an agenda. Civic announcements. Anyone from the audience have any civic announcements? Elaine Zack, our county commissioner.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to be here.
Welcome.
It, I want to let you know that last week, September twenty-seventh, I did vote on the Oakland County budget. And I want to tell you some additions that we were able to add to it. It is a balanced budget for three years. And we were able to appropriate a half a million dollars toward school breakfast programs. I had the opportunity to visit the program here at Hazel Park High School that's offered through United Way. And this is a program in conjunction with Oakland County, United Way, and Oakland Schools to ensure that all schools in Oakland County that have lower income individuals, forty percent, there's going to be universal breakfast programs. It's really hard when you don't have universal. And people feel sign, you know, discriminated against. So I'm really excited that we're going to be bringing more nutrition to our students in Oakland County. Some other things that we did recently, I talked about, we had a bipartisan elections committee. This is the hard copy of the report. After the primary that didn't go as smoothly, there were ballot shortages. We had a bipartisan group that studied this. We heard from lots of clerks, heard from lots of different voters. And there are many recommendations in this report. And as a result of the report, we did appropriate two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars more for our clerk's office to make sure that there won't be ballot shortages and other issues. And there's a lot of different recommendations. This is on the county website. You know, one of the first recommendation, fund adequate ballot, ballot supplies and other things. Work more collaboratively with clerks throughout Oakland County. Different things like that. So if you're interested, it was a really very excellent report. Other things in the budget that we added, we did continue the bullying program. Fifty thousand dollars in collaboration with Oakland Schools. They are doing a community conversation at the end of this month. If you're interested in Oakland Schools has more information about that. Part of that is train, the trainer throughout the county so that we don't have bullying. Another thing that we, that I voted on several years ago was the Detroit Institute of Arts Millage. And this is something that we're all taxed. And we do get two or three reports from the director every year. He come, comes to our Board of Commissioners auditorium, tells us what's going on. And we did have, one of the things that we did in our contract is that we said that they have to spend at least three hundred thousand dollars in direct pro, programs in our communities with our constituents. And they are exceeding the exp, the expectations. And we did have one senior, in the first six months of this year, we did have one senior group from Hazel Park and four schools went to the Detroit Institute of Arts for free. You know, it's free buses and then obviously as Oakland County residents, we have free admission. So they're clearly teaching teachers, really bringing art into the communities in positive ways. I also want to talk a little bit about cybersecurity. Our city manager, so unfortunately, several weeks ago, one of our smaller cities, villages and townships in Oakland County got hacked by an outside cybersecurity entity. And they actually took the water bill information. And so they looked at recovering it, you know, they were trying to ransom, you know, this information from this community. Oakland, I know, you're looking at curious, but it's a big business, cybersecurity. So Oakland County helped. And we do have all these different blocks and do we have insurance here and, you know, looking at that. And the process, I was briefed on it, on the process, they determined that it was less expensive to pay the ransom than it was to pay to recover the water bills. And, you know, the insurance company paid it. And they had to go through third parties. It's like you're going through a couple of different layers to pay the ransom. And it, it's, I feel like I was in some other world, but it was in Oakland County. And I'm talking about this because we need to think this way, unfortunately. And so I do encourage you to be working as closely as you can with Oakland County and your insurance, whatever. So we don't want, I don't want to see any other communities hacked.
Yeah.
So, big issue, talk about it.
Does the county have any procedures in which they want to hand out to the communities?
They are trying to partner with the communities as much as they can. You know, free consultation.
Or as resources for us to pick from.
Well, there's consultation.
I know we have consultations. I just didn't know if we had the opportunity to.
We actually take cybersecurity very seriously in Hazel Park. We've had UHY come in. We actually did a cybersecurity audit last year. They identified different things, areas where we thought we could have some level of weakness. We're actually pretty far up on this game. Thankfully, we haven't had an incident. But whomever you are, you're vulnerable for this type of incident. We're quite well protected and anything that Oakland County's got to share with us. And if you have best practices or something like that, we'll be happy to look at those. But I take this very seriously. This is something that's of interest to me. I am a member of the FBI's Infraguard Program. We go to trainings on this thing three or four times a year. It's something that's very important to me. So we, yes, we take cybersecurity very seriously here in Hazel Park.
Great to hear this and I will make sure that information is sent to the community.
Right, we'll be, we'll be happy to participate with Oakland County, any programs that they have to make us a harder target as well.
That's great.
Thank you for the affirmation.
Thank you. It was eye-opening for, I see the council as it was for me. I had no idea.
Well, we all know what's out there. We just never expected it at home.
Our backyard.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Helene.
Thank you, Helene.
Any other comments for civic announcements? Step up, open.
Hi there, I think you all know me. Four twenty-five West Nine Mile Road. So I'm just here representing Mike Jones from the West End Hazel Park Group. He's, it's his anniversary, so he didn't want to come, but he had some notes about the event this past weekend that he wanted me to take care of here. So I wanted to thank the city for helping us set up the stage, or helping us stage the alley party that helped kick off the Arttober Sculpture Walk. Steve Tancuzzi from the DPW and his team are great in getting the alley tidy and safe. Our West End group organizes this party out of our own funds and we might not be able to do it without the help that you guys provide. So, thank you, Ed Klobuchar. We understand the Art Council collected over seven hundred dollars at this event with beer sales. As a personal note, as the chairperson for Arttober, I know that, that that money will help offset the fifty-dollar stipend that we had voted on to give to the Arttober Sculptor participants in there. So I want to thank the Art Council for that, too. As an organization, WHP really appreciates our neighbors and community. So we want to thank the other civic groups that set up tables despite the weather. So, yeah, it was pretty rough. So Amanda from the Hazel Park Library, she was present to help drive visitors over to the library display that was set up for October. And Karine Stalker was out there kind of manning some special hours, I guess. So we hope that they had some good participation. I know they did last year. Dr. Croupy from the Hazel Park Schools, she was able to engage numerous parents about the progress her staff is making in education. So I think that's a good, good thing that happened during the event. Creative Arts, pleased to hear that they collected some donations as well as engaged some young people with craft building. Maybe some old ones, too. I don't know. I don't know what they did. Neighborhood Enrichment was present, kind of at the last end. And I apologize to Andy for getting to him late because we wanted to really have Sakura represented. And his last minute appeals didn't really, I guess, come to fruition, but thanks for your time. I guess that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It was a lot of fun. Thank you.
That was a great time.
It was a blast. And Creative Arts, we set up in the, the sweet spot, right, the Goldilocks Zone between the beer tent and the food, which were both great, but when the rain started, we're looking at this big giant building in the downspout. And thank goodness, one of our officers that was, they were just kind of keeping tabs on stuff. He's super tall. So he hid out under the rainstorm and every once in a while did this and made sure the tent didn't collapse on us. But it was really a fun event. Really enjoyed it.
All right.
Thank you guys for hosting it and.
Oh.
My t-shirt.
Thanks for that, too. Oh, and I guess I forgot the, the police department. Without them there, you might have been having to poke that tent all by yourself.
Yeah, they were lifesavers.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else for civic announcements from the audience? I do want to bring up Tom and Tim from our superintendent from DPW and Water. It's that time of year, gentlemen. We're, as we see here, yard waste, Wall Street maintenance, brush chipping and the new garbage carts. Can you fill us in, please?
Sure. We, just recently, we did receive our new ninety-five gallon garbage cans. They are for sale at DPW and now at the Treasury Office. People can come and pay for them here. And we will deliver if needed. They are a large cart. Ninety-five gallon cart is about the same volume as three small garbage cans, so it's quite a bet.
It's a big savings at fifty-five dollars.
Fifty-five dollars and it's, it's on wheels, nice cart, so. It's actually a big seller already this week. I think we sold about twelve of them. We just got them in.
Yeah. And the brush and the leaves, the leaves will be falling soon?
At that time of year, we ask residents not to rake their leaves out in the street. Please do not rake the leaves out in the street. Put them in the yard waste bags or in a garbage can with the yard waste sticker. That's been a problem over the years. People, we do make one pass with our large leaf truck. And the idea is to make sure that our drains stay clear when rain and freezing rain and snow has somewhere to go. A lot of people will see the trucks and like, yay, I can rake my leaves out in the street. Please do not do that. We will attempt to bypass those and make that a code enforcement issue.
I was just seeing in the flyer, the mayor has that, it's bold print. Yeah. This is a ticketable offense.
Yes.
So it's only been about fifteen years?
Yeah.
We've been doing the same program?
Fourteen years, twelve, fourteen years for sure. At least fourteen.
Also during this leaf season, I'm going to ask the citizens for their assistance in keeping the street drains cleared off, especially when it's starting to get the heavier rains, they tend to allow streets to back up. Simple rake and pull them up right over the curb and the street will drain out just fine.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? I see no one. I would like to ask the city council if they have any civic announcements.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm really excited about this today. I'm going to, I'm going to give you guys a little bit of background and then I'm going to tell you about the event. That's coming, I promise. So one of the things I've been doing is I've been working on the Hazel Park Nature Initiative. It's currently a partnership between myself and Grace with Mulberry Hill Wildlife, as she's a local resident. And also been working with Ed, Serene, Tom Jones, everybody. So we're looking forward to incorporating some of these ideas into multiple city departments in the community. So what we're looking into doing, we're looking into restoring native and natural habitats for different, we're calling it the five Bs, so roughly bats, bees, birds, butterflies and bugs. So by restoring these habitats throughout the community, teaching residents and businesses how they can incorporate these ideas onto their property. So if you remember, I've brought up a lot of natural landscaping when we were going through the medical marijuana process for that type of landscaping, parking lots, stuff like that. We're also looking at finding land management solutions to minimize flooding, utilizing plants, other landscaping to help do stuff that's, it looks nice, but it also provides habitat. And then we're working on creating educational opportunities, seeking funding for things like signs that can go into a park that explain what a monarch way station and stuff like that is. And so one of the educational opportunities, we're going to be kicking off Bat Week. It's in two weeks. Bat Week is going to be during the regular family fun night at the Hazel Park District Library. So we're going to have presentations by Night Nature Alliance as well as Mulberry Hill Wildlife. You can see bat houses, learn how to make a bat house. There's going to be games. We'll have a bat skeleton and a lot of other just cool bat facts and fun things that you can learn about for Bat Week, which is recognized nationally. And then that's just our kickoff and we'll, as we have more events, we'll come back and we'll let you guys know about some more of the great opportunities we have for residents to participate in. And that is, excuse me, Tuesday, October twenty-third, six P.M., Family Fun Night at the Hazel Park District Library. So come excited for Bat Week. And I believe that same week, they have another wildlife presenter that has a bunch of different animals as well.
Please RSVP for these events. The last time the bats were at the Hazel Park Library, we had an overflow crowd. So there's some RSVP information on the flyer and on the Facebook posting. And we'll put that up on the website tomorrow. Please call and RSVP so we know how many people are coming.
Thank you. Any other comments from the city council?
Yes, Your Honor. Just want to remind folks that the eighteenth, from six to eight, is the first responders dinner that's going to be held at Hazel Park High School. This is where we are going to acknowledge the firefighter and police officer of the year. Sheriff Bouchard is going to be our guest speaker and should be a lovely event. And also trunk or treat this year is at a different day and different location. It's going to be at Scout Park, which is behind Hazel Park Junior High School. And the, it's going to be on the twenty-seventh, so that frees everybody up for Halloween, regular, regular Halloween. So hope to see folks there. One to four P.M. And yes, Tina? You know what? Folks could still pop in, though, if they just want to see the speech.
I think we're sold out.
Really?
Totally sold out.
Okay, disregard that. If you haven't bought your tickets, we'll let you know how it was next council.
We might have a trickle here or there, cancellations, but right now.
That's, that's outstanding that we've got that kind of support. And this, this really, this is where folks are buying a ticket for a dinner and to pay tribute to these men and women that keep us safe in our community. Nobody's making money off it. It's just going to be a thank you, guys and gals. So, thank you, Your Honor.
Any other comments from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I want to mention that Zombie Walk will be coming back to Hazel Park on the nineteenth at six thirty, courtesy of the local Hazel Park Girl Scout troop. Show up at City Hall in the courtyard area, dressed like a zombie or not dressed like a zombie. Shamble down the street to Woodward Heights like a zombie or just walk down to Woodward Heights. But show up here, have a good time. The last few Zombie Walks we've had were very well attended and they were a lot of fun. So I'm glad that the Girl Scouts are bringing this tradition back to Hazel Park and we hope that it's a very successful event.
Yes, we do. Is it a food drive?
It's also a food drive and we're asking that you bring two cans of non-perishable foods to the Zombie Walk.
Not for the zombies, so.
Not for the zombies. We won't kick you out.
Bring brains.
Please bring the, the cans of food.
Any other comments from the council? For civic announcements, we'll close civic announcements.
Mr. Mayor, I just want, I want to thank City Ed Church for what they do to keep the trunk or treat going. And I was very pleased that this year, they did switch the location because it had put a little bit of a strain on some of the neighbors around Tuskegee Park. And this year, I'm glad that it will not be competing with Halloween. And my challenge to the residents of Hazel Park is to hand out Halloween candy. When I was a little kid, almost every house had their porch light on and they were handing out candy. I know that it's a, you know, an expense, but a small bag of candy to make the kids happy, I think, is a small price to pay to build a sense of community in Hazel Park. And I really hope that everybody hands out candy.
Okay, we're going to open up public discussion. Anyone from the audience have any public discussion or comments they'd like to come up to the podium and give out? See no one. We'll close public discussion. Special presentations, resolution honoring Joanne Taylor.
Mr. Mayor, you have the resolutions before you. If you'd like, I will read and you may present, if you don't mind. Which one do you have first?
Joanne Taylor.
Joanne, come on up here. A resolution honoring Joanne Taylor. Whereas Joanne Taylor was the owner-manager of Hazel Park Bowl for over twenty-four years. A signature business in the city of Hazel Park for many decades that closed on July thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, to make way for new development. And whereas Joanne Taylor has been a huge supporter of the city of Hazel Park, the Hazel Park School District and the Hazel Park Police and Fire Departments. And whereas Joanne Taylor has been especially supportive with her time and money to the annual Hazel Park Fire Department Bowling Fundraiser. And whereas Joanne Taylor and Hazel Park Bowl hosted many fundraisers supporting Hazel Park Athletic Boosters, Band Boosters, the Hazel Park Lions Club, and sadly, a fundraiser in the aftermath of the loss of one of Hazel Park's first responders. And whereas Joanne Taylor ran the Hamtramck Singles Classic for the past twenty-two years, one of the largest privately-owned amateur bowling tournaments in the country, which brings in approximately four thousand five hundred bowlers per year to the city of Hazel Park. And whereas Joanne Taylor, through hosting many events and sponsoring many worthy causes, made great friends and contacts with the people of Hazel Park and built relationships with other local businesses. So, therefore, the Hazel Park City Council hereby honors Joanne Taylor for her many years of successful ownership and management of Hazel Park Bowl. And we thank her for her community involvement and generosity as we wish her all the best in her future endeavors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've actually been involved with Hazel Park, the city, for over forty-nine years. I started at Hazel Park Bowl as a score monitor when it was owned by Mr. Billy Williams. Without the city of Hazel Park, all of you, through the years, we could not have had as much fun or been able to do the things we did. I'm really going to miss the city of Hazel Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we will miss you as well. Thank you. You were always willing to donate your facilities for our community events. You never said no. Thank you so much.
And now move us down to the next resolution of Curtis Kitchen and Bath. We have anybody here from Curtis Kitchen?
Do we have anybody here from Curtis Kitchen and Bath? Well, you know what? I'll read the resolution into the record and we'll see if we can't get them at the next meeting to.
Table that item until the next meeting.
We can, if you'd like.
Just do that.
But I just want everybody to know that we are giving Curtis Kitchen and Bath a resolution because they donated a new kitchen to the Hazel Park Recreation Department. This is the second new kitchen that Curtis Kitchen and Bath has given to the city of Hazel Park. They also redid the kitchen in the fire department, correct, Chief?
Yep.
So again, if you haven't been to see the new kitchen, that kitchen that they replaced was the same kitchen that was there when I started working there when I was in high school in nineteen eighty-one.
It's been there a long time.
So that kitchen's been there for a while. So.
Looks very nice over there.
Some of my department heads weren't even born then. So we're very grateful to them for helping out with this and can't wait to get a representative of the company here.
Close the resolutions. Takes to the consent agenda. Consent agenda. Counsel, we can get an approval?
Move approval, Mr. Mayor, of items one through nine on the consent agenda.
We have a support.
I'll support.
I do have one app, one person that did put a slip into this, have a comment at item nine. Jesse Robinson?
Robertson.
Robertson, sorry. No Y in there. Sorry.
Jesse Robertson, whoops, two-three-three-five-three Hoover Avenue. I was actually here at the meeting on, I believe it was August twenty-eighth, where we were discussing the, the appointment of Lacy Christiansen. I apologize if I made a mistake on the name. And this had come up there and I recall there was a lengthy and lively debate that a lot of very valid points were brought up. For one, as I do recall, that it was, it explained that, you know, she has eminent qualification for her, for such positions. And similarly, that it was a potential good cost-saving measure for the city of Hazel Park. There was one issue, though, or thing that stuck in my mind then and still kind of remains, I should say, unaddressed. And that is actually the question of appearances. From my understanding, in most municipalities and many other businesses of an appreciable size to have a proper department for their finances, the core duties are usually split amongst multiple different people, such as having a treasurer and a finance director, so that you have basically multiple heads looking for each other to, as a means of ensuring that everything is done on the straight and narrow. While Lacy may be extremely qualified and trustworthy, it still makes me wonder how other people might view it. And again, I definitely would trust her, but this is the year twenty eighteen. And pretty much everybody is looking for a chance to hurl an accusation or suggest misconduct. And I was just concerned over how this might look to others and potentially what sort of criticism or such it might draw from others. And if the city was, you know, prepared for this sort of possibility.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Thank you for your comments.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
I'd like, hang on. We have a motion I didn't ask for. We have second. Now we can ask for discussion. And I, Councilwoman Aubrey had her hand up first. I'd like to take her comments.
So I was one of the individuals that expressed some concern over this appointment and requested for it to be a shorter term. I reached out over, over the past time to my colleagues, my colleagues in city government. I've spoken to finance directors, city managers, council people through cities, large and small, asked how they deal with the situation, concerns that they would have with the situation. I brought up those concerns with, with Ed, with the city manager. I'm satisfied with the measures that we have now put into place to ensure that there, there should be no issue with her performing both duties. So should anybody have a perceived issue, I'm sure we can explain to them the same information that was explained to me and, and everyone will kind of understand, feel more comfortable with this. But this is not uncommon, especially in smaller communities like ours with limited resources to have somebody perform multiple.
But every department head does it. And again, thanks to the West Nine Mile or the West End businesses. That was a lot of fun in the art fair. Maybe they can do something about the weather next year, but. Remember to get out and vote November sixth and have a happy Halloween. And in the words of Tom Selman, if you love somebody, tell them. And if you have little kids, if you have children, hug them every day and tell them you love them. Have a great day.
Have a great day.
So want to, again, remind everybody, vote. I noticed when I was out earlier, there's some nice voter guides that were dropped off by the Legal Women Voters that you can pick up here at City Hall that are pretty thorough with some information about everybody that's running for office. So please be an informed voter. Come check it out. Go online. You can print off your sample ballot ahead of time. We no longer have straight-ticket voting. So if you want to speed up the process, get in, get out, you can download your ballot ahead of time, fill it out, and then you can just transfer that to your ballot when you vote. And then I also wanted to bring up, Beth, I briefly touched on it. Sorry, Councilmember Holland. Last month, we, we all, all of us attended the Michigan Municipal League Conference in Grand Rapids. It was an absolutely fantastic event. This is probably the best conference I've been to yet. I've been going to these conferences for some time. Journalismism, so excited. It was such a great event. And that Alyssa, because I saw the accident, it gets well soon.
Just get away from that. Whether you disagree or not, you don't have to make it rude. You can disagree respectfully. Thank you. Have a good night. Motion to go to exec session.
So moved, Mr. Mayor, for exec session.
For purposes of litigation.
For purposes of litigation.
I have a support.
Support.
Attention? None.